Exactly.
It's been good. It's been peaceful. Quite peaceful.
That sounds amazing.
So funny because the last three, so I sent out four letters off before.
So tired from today.
All locked in lawsuits. And so I was like, what a shame. I dropped the bomb and then ran. More than I ever thought it would be. Oh, yeah. It was two years, but twelve, two and a half.
You're early. Am I ready to be on the right note?
Exactly. Have to use creams now to keep myself looking semi-useful.
Those are the minutes, yeah.
How did the last work session go?
I don't know. I mean.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out, like, I'm always so nervous to think over.
Ready to go?
Hmm.
Okay. Okay, the August 12th, 2025 Roy City Planning Commission meeting will now commence. We'll begin our meeting with a pledge. I've asked Commissioner Tanner if he would lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any of our commissioners have any declaration of conflicts they'd like to?
No.
Okay. Go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of the July 27th, 2025 Work Session Minutes. Do we have a motion?
Did everybody get through it?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on July 27th.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move to Agenda Item Number Three, Legislative Item. Consider a request to amend the zoning map from R4 multifamily residential, RS multifamily residential, for the property located at approximately 4550 South, 1900 West. Do we have the applicant? Go ahead and come forward to the stand, please. Go ahead and give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Alvey, 1627 West, 2290 South, Woods Cross.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Am I diving right in, or are you starting?
You're it.
Alrighty. Catching me off guard tonight, but thank you. Good to be with everyone here tonight. Appreciate your time and consideration. I know the natural reaction to a request for a change is one of concern and to maintain the status quo. I hope that I can dispel those concerns and show that what we are proposing has the needs and desires of the community at heart. It can be a win-win for everybody as we look to improve and add value to the neighborhood through this project. So first slide we have over here is just an aerial view of the project. In the highlighted green area, there are three homes that currently front 1900 West. And then we have about an acre of vacant land to the, to the west. And really, the question everybody should be asking themselves tonight is, do they think it would be appropriate to leave these three homes as is? Or roll them into the project and the proposal we had previously for this acre of land to the west, which I'll dive into a little bit further here. These are two street views, 1900 West. So we have three homes here in the middle of that top photo. To the south, we have some commercial buildings. To the north, we have some townhomes. Off of 4550 South, we have two adjacent fourplexes. So the property is already zoned R4, which is very appropriate for the neighborhood. And the reason we're asking for a change from R4 to R5 is so that we would like to build some townhomes, which I'll get into. But it's a very small difference we're asking for. We're trying to build two additional townhomes versus what's currently permitted in the R4 zone. So I have been investing in real estate in Roy for the past 10 years. During that time, I've remodeled and sold, or remodeled and rented dozens of four-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot homes. These homes are typically built between the 1940s and 1980s. And there are fewer and fewer of these homes that are being built as time has progressed because they don't pencil out on paper versus the cost of the land. Most of the newer construction that we see focuses on larger homes or multifamily housing and apartments. My goal and my product is to provide more of these four-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot entry-level homes, which are so desperately needed to meet the demographics of this community. So the slide here shows some townhomes that have been drawn by our architect, which we have proposed to build on the acre to the west. Some highlights of these townhomes. I call these townhomes the new single-family home. I referenced how we don't build these single-family 2,000-square-foot homes anymore. They just don't pencil out. But these units are designed to be a replacement of that. They're four bedrooms and three bathrooms each. There's a two-car garage. And they have 2,237 square foot of finished living space with an additional 339 square feet of unfinished storage space in the basement. Little bit of history, as I referenced previously. This may look familiar to some. We purchased the first home, which is 4571 South, and then this acre of land, which is kind of in a U shape, back in 2019. I got to know the other property owners to the south of me as they participated in the request for a new plat. At the time, they didn't want to sell. They wanted to just stay in their homes. And we were ready to move forward with building 12 townhomes on this U-shaped piece of land when COVID hit. When COVID hit, we couldn't get building supplies, so we sidelined the project. About a year ago, we decided to move forward again, and in talking to the adjacent property owners, they said, you know what? Why don't you just buy our homes and roll it into your project? So we ended up purchasing the other two lots here. And we've been working with Steve and our engineer ever since. And the proposal we've come up with to justify the cost of tearing down three of the homes on 1900 West is 22 new townhomes. Now, thinking about and envisioning possibilities on this land is a lot of fun. But the trouble is justifying the cost of that vision. We still want to build our four-bedroom, 2,000-square-foot townhomes. Our product hasn't changed. The question is, how do we justify the cost of tearing down three buildings to replace them with new buildings? At the bottom of the slide here, I show, maybe hard to see, but the R4 zone allows for, or requires, I should say, 3,630 square feet of land per unit. With the acreage that we have, that would allow us to build 20 of our townhomes on this site. Versus, these townhomes on this image here are to scale. My engineer can fit 22 of these townhomes on site, but we don't meet Roy City's calculation of square footage per unit. So we've decided to submit the request for the change in zone to R5, so we can get those extra two units and justify replacing three buildings with 10. Whereas otherwise, it just doesn't make sense to tear down three buildings to put eight there. Makes financial sense just to leave them there. We're kind of missing out at Winderville opportunity. If we proceed forward with building 12 townhomes and leave these other homes there, then they kind of become a permanent fixture. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but it really just boils down to those two extra units we're trying to get for our request for the zone change here.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? From the commission? Okay, thank you. Steve?
Okay, as mentioned, this is a request for a rezone from R4 multifamily to R5 multifamily. Proximal location here in the aerial. As you'd already indicated, you got townhomes to the, to the north, kind of condos and stuff to the, to the east. Commercial and single-family to the south, and then multifamily to the, to the east, with some single-family just a little east of that. So you're kind of in a good neighborhood there. Zoning map and future land use map, so future land use map on the side closest to you and zoning on the far. Future land use map called the Area B multifamily, which it, which it is, and zoning is currently R4, and they're just looking to go R5. As you know, the, there was a text ordinance change that came through. Planning Commission reviewed it, recommended approval to change the R4 to allow for 18 units an acre. And an R5 to allow 25 units an acre. Council did not approve for the R4 to change from 12, but did approve the R5 up to 20 units an acre. So that's kind of the difference between the two. They're still multifamily. They still have the same parking standard requirements, still have the same height restrictions of 35 feet. So either way, it's going to be the same product, just you have 20 or do you have 22, I guess, is what it is. So staff would recommend forwarding a positive recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for me? Okay. It's now time to move the meeting into public comment, but before we do that, we would want to just talk about a few ground rules, if that's okay. The public is welcome to come up and share their thoughts on this application. Please keep your comments to three minutes, if you can, and that's about a page worth of written comment. Please state your name and your address as you address the commission. Please keep all your comments directed toward the commission. And if there is someone who has made comments that are similar to the ones you have made, just, rather than repeat, maybe just express that you agree to certain points that have already been made, that way we can keep the move, the meeting flowing. With that, we'll look for a motion to move into public comment.
Motion to go into public hearing.
We have a motion.
A second.
We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Floor is now open for the public to come and express their thoughts on this application. Please come to the front if you wish.
Hi, I'm Kevin Homer. I live here at 5398 South, 4,000 West here in Roy. I appreciate the work that has been done on this, and I also appreciate very much that the property owner has been very active in trying to push this through. Having looked at the proposed change from R4 to R5, I think it would be a good thing to do that. I would concur and agree with the planning commissioner that this is a good thing to be done. For the commission members, I do have a question that I would like to ask. Right now, the way it's set up, there are three individual, uh, single-family dwellings, and there are three access points directly onto 1900, which we know is already a very busy road. It appears that the current plan would allow for a single point of ingress and egress on 4550 South, which would probably be a good thing.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so that would make it even better and a little bit safer for traffic instead of having three points of in, you know, coming in and out. There's just one. But overall, it looks like a really good project, and I would agree that this is a good thing and I would recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any others that would like to? Steve?
I do have an email that was received.
Okay.
You had one email.
You had one email in your, in your packet. I did receive another one this afternoon, so if I could read it. So it's on the record. So unfortunately, I'm not able to attend the, the meeting tonight, but I wanted to voice my opinion in regard to the zoning change located at 4550 South, 1900 West. The property butts dislocate, my property butts dislocation and adding more townhomes and/or apartments to this location will cause my property value to go down as well as cause undue stress on our, on our family. We selected this location for its privacy, low traffic, and minimal conflicts with other people. We have done a lot of work on our property to increase the value and our privacy. If the property behind us is rezoned, it will, we will lose the value we built into the property as well as our privacy. We will lose all of the aspects that brought us to Roy in the first place. We will now be dealing with people watching out their windows as we are trying to enjoy the movie while relaxing in our hot tub. We will be dealing with additional noise in construction as well as all the additional people moving in behind us. We will lose our view of the mountains. We will lose our sense of security since statistics show that crime rates always increase when new apartments are built in the area. We will lose the battle of our pets' health. It is enough that his anxiety at its high levels with just having a single-family renting one of the homes behind us now will be dealing with a whole new issue, which will cost us more in-vat bills. Our brand-new fence with the mow strip will, will end up damaged. Who will pay for that? We will lose the safe feeling of having our granddaughter play in the backyard without having someone watching her. I can keep going, but I'm not here to write a book for you. I know you have plenty of, to review, and I understand how many are saying that this is a good thing. But I would like for you to take into consideration the lives and privacy of those who are, or who will be affected, those who are already here, landowners, property taxpayers, business owners, and private citizens. Thank you, Robert and Cassandra Cherry, at 1946 West, 4,600 South.
Thank you. If there aren't any other comments from the public, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to close. Do, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion.
A second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I can try to answer his questions. Granted, he's, he's not, or they're not here to hear them. I know traffic is an issue, but it's, traffic can be pedestrian traffic if, if you really wanted it to. So unless others are willing to get out of their cars and walk to places, traffic is going to always be there. 1900 West is a busy road, and I'll kind of leave it at that, and if you guys have comments, you can. Privacy, I'm already, they can have 20 units at 35 feet tall, so privacy isn't a, a concern because it's not going to change the, the product. It's just the number of units allowed. Even a single-family home can be 35 feet to peak of roof, so two and a half, three stories. Where they sit on 4,600 South, if you look at the aerial, they're just kind of south in the cul-de-sac. To the east of them is that strip mall that exists, so they're, part of their view is already blocked. Sure, they can't see the mountains. They could see it kind of northeast, but again, those could be blocked regardless of, of what's built. Security, I, I understand everybody has that, that feel, but I know fencing helps with that. Unfortunately, six-foot-tall fence is all that's allowed. So there, there's not much we can, we can do there. Again, knowing that the product can already be built, and they're just asking for a couple additional. Safety, that's always something that's always on the people's minds, but it's, during a rezone request, there's, it's kind of hard to say yes or no, or maybe it would happen, so. And then Kevin Homer's comment about access to 19, that would be you dot that make those decisions and the applicant, if they wanted to try to get an access onto 19. This still hasn't, this product hasn't been reviewed with all three homes being removed and townhomes. So the fire department really hasn't looked at the, the new design. So they may require access, they may not. It's, it's hard to say. But that would be you dot deciding yes or no for the access point onto 19. Soon as you tear down those three homes, you dot's going to close those three access points quicker than I just said it.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Okay, commission, thoughts?
Yeah, just a couple things from the comments that were made. The one thing I keep, I keep hearing is they're blocking the view of the mountains and, and I have a hard time having that argument because nothing is guaranteed as far as your view. The only way you can guarantee your view is if you buy the property around you and, and, you know, protect that view, but that doesn't mean somebody's not going to build something. So I, I struggle with that kind of a comment. Nothing is guaranteed. There's no view guaranteed. So I, I, I think as much as the people that are worried about the townhomes peeking at them, it goes both ways. The neighborhood peeking at the people in the townhomes, and so I, some of it I just feel like is a, is just more of this anxiety about the change and not necessarily about facts. It's tough to quantify those things without having some study that's produced and that's out there. So I struggle with some of those comments and concerns. I know traffic has always brought up in these things, and I challenge us all to understand the traffic issues within our city. We, like Sunset and Clearfield, are pass-through cities. That the building that's going on west of us is where the large quantities of volumes are starting to, to gather. It's not in our pocket multifamily developments. It's in what's happening on the west side, and it's tough to control. You have Hooper, West Haven, Clinton, Taylor. All those are building, you know, additional housing in their area that we have no control over. But how do they get to the freeway? They come through our city. And with the west side highway, 30 years, who knows? It's just going to happen. Our traffic is going to continue to increase as they develop out west. The other side of that is that those people, for now, are shopping at our grocery stores, and their tax dollars are coming to Roy and benefiting the Roy citizens. So it, it's a double-edged sword, but the, the traffic isn't necessarily what the city's creating as much as those cities surrounding us that are coming through Roy, that are creating a, a good portion of the traffic congestion that we're seeing. So on this type of a development, I don't see it adding to our problem. I see it that it's just that, you know, additional cars that, it, it just, it's a percentage of what we already have within our city of drivers, so I would struggle with that being a reason also as far as traffic, so.
Keep in mind, this is already zoned multifamily.
Right. It's already zoned that.
Sorry.
So, but I don't know that, that traffic can be an argument in this type of thing. It just can't be, so.
So I just want to clarify just for ourselves and the public, so it would either be, and this is back to the developer, but it would either be that they're going to build 12 townhomes and leave the three houses and do something with them. We don't know what. Or they tear down the three houses and make however many townhomes can fit basically within the guidelines, yeah.
And for clarity, they're, the rental homes, right? All of them?
The plan is to have them individually platted, so there will be individual ownership.
So, but the, the three homes currently are all rentals?
At the current moment, yes.
And one of them was a business at one time?
Uh, previous to our ownership, yes.
Previous to our ownership, okay. Thank you.
But I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly, just so, okay.
I think this is a motion for a rezone of our site plan, so.
Right, absolutely. I mean, I think that, yeah, I'm just trying to explain, like, it's going to be They're coming regardless. The housing, it's going to be townhomes regardless.
Regardless, yeah.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the commission? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'm just trying to find it here.
I was searching for mine too, so. Are you going to do it, Brody?
Uh, motion to approve the rezone request for, or from R4 multifamily residential to R5 multifamily residential for the property located at approximately 4550 South, 1900 West.
Brody, that's a recommendation to the city council.
A recommendation to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. This will be a roll call vote. Steve?
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Holbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Felt?
Aye.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Tanner?
Aye.
Pass is five zero.
Okay. Do we know when this will appear on?
I was unable to find out if we can go on next week or not, but I'll let you know. I know they got budget issues, so I don't know if they're going to want anything else on their agenda, but I'll let you know.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and move to Agenda Item Number Four. Consider a requet, a request for approval of a conditional use, vehicle service, site plan, and architectural approval for Jiffy Lube for property located at approximately 4084 South Midland Drive. Do we have the applicant here? Okay.
I was told that they were sending an engineer or somebody. Anybody here for the Jiffy Lube?
Okay. Do you think they'll care if you make it for them, or do you want to table this?
Well, they, they didn't send me a presentation. They said they'll just use mine, so.
So then we'll just table this one?
Just as long as everybody knows that this is not my product or project, it's theirs.
Okay.
What you do with voting, that's up to you. I don't think it really, I mean, we'll go through it, and if you have questions, I can try to answer. So it's a request for conditional use within the mixed-use zoning code in the urban corridor zone. A vehicle service is a conditional use. They're asking for site plan and architectural review for the, the building. As you know, or may or may not know, there's already a Jiffy Lube there just to the west of it. This place has gotten a lot of business and doing really well. The business owner would, wanted to expand the building, but doesn't have room on site to do that. So they rented basically out the, the parcel behind them to add a, a couple additional bays. The building to the west was done under the community commercial zone, so it's, is going to be a little different in look, but similar in color, so it will still look like they were, you know, consistent, but some of the, the design criteria have changed a little bit. So again, site plan-wise, just so you can tell between the, the new building and the old building, where everything's at, more specific than the site of the new location. Again, they're just east of the existing Jiffy Lube, south of McDonald's. If we go back to the aerial, the large, and Glenda's going to be happy. The large area here was recently approved for 31 townhomes to be built, and they're currently doing site work for that. This is one of the last few remaining vacant sites in that particular subdivision. So just kind of take away the, the weeds and, and, and stuff to make it in there. The big things that will change is landscaping requirements for this are going to be different than the old ones. And of course, architectural itself. Sitting down with our city attorney, we've kind of discussed it and discussed with the applicant. We're going to kind of do a review on that which is most visible from the streets under today's standards and those, those elevations that are less visible from the streets under the old. That way, they can, it's, it's consistent, but it's got still some modern It's consistent, but it's got still some modern standards for today's design. So the north end, which is kind of the red Jiffy Lube in the corner on the north, will have... be under today's standards. So it won't be stucco. They will present a different material. Now granted, the list of materials and the ordinance is already panned out, so they'll just look and see which ones they like, submit a new elevation. On the east, they're looking to do kind of the similar what's on the west. So take that feature and put it here. Because again, that's the area that's most visible from the street. So the southern elevation and the southern part of the eastern elevation will remain kind of similar to what the building next door is. Now, next door isn't red, isn't anything, so they will paint the stucco, whatever color this new building is approved. So it's, again, color-wise, it will match. Material-wise, it will match somewhat, but not completely. So it will be a little different, but it will be similar. Legal says we could probably justify that in an aspect to make it so it's easier, so it's cohesive with new builds, and yet cohesive with old builds. I think this is the perfect building to kind of do that with, because to the south of it is... would be a new build, and that will have the same issues and requirements in the new standards. So staff would recommend approval, both as the use, the architectural, and the site plan. There are no large issues in the site plan that can't be resolved. The dumpster up front does need to move, but it's the same user, so they're going to talk to the user and say, hey, can just the new building use the old building's dumpster, so they don't have to create a new one? If they have to expand it, we have some room on that other one to expand, to get an additional one. If they have to leave it here, we've already discussed how to landscape around it, so it's kind of disappears in the landscaping, so it's not so obvious. But the applicant is willing to do things that by code are required, but what the DRC comments have come through. So I would just go ahead and me personally approve it. But that comes down to you.
Thank you, Steve.
Any questions?
I am curious of this.
You the engineer?
Yeah, I apologize, I received wrong time.
No, you're good.
Do you want to come up and make a presentation?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay. Come on up. Tell us your name and your address, please, for the record.
Name and address, is it?
Yes.
I'm Hiromozgathorpe. I'm the engineer that did the civil design for this. Address is 67 East 400 North in Centerville, Utah. And yeah, I caught the end of what Steve had said, but I think you got the information. It's going to be a Jiffy Lube kind of right behind on that triangular piece of land. One of the comments we had received, just for clarification, was regarding the part on the east right there, or I guess maybe that's south. I can't remember how this drawing's oriented.
North, up.
Yeah. Okay, so on the south there of that triangular piece of land, that's the plan for the developer is to quickly indeed that to the adjacent property owner who's, I think, currently already using it, so it'll continue how it's currently being used. And yeah, as Steve mentioned, there's a few items that we have to clean up with the plans, based on comments that we received from the city, but the majority of the plan is there, and that's kind of just an extension. Another Jiffy Lube kind of behind the current one with a couple different amenities and services that they'll offer there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any comments from the commission for the applicant?
Congratulations that you need more space.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a positive thing, right?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Because this is good.
Yeah. I drive by there all the time. It would be nice to not just have weeds.
Definitely.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, so with this, there'll be two motions, site plan and architectural. Three motions.
Three motions.
Three motions.
Conditional use.
That's right.
Site plan and architectural, yep.
Are there any other comments or discussion items before we move to a vote? Or a recommendation?
Not to vote.
No, no recommendation? Okay.
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the conditional use for the vehicle service shop with the conditions as stated in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second? All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next motion.
Okay. I motion to consider... Or to approve the site plan approval for Jiffy Lube at the property at approximately 4084 South Midland Drive with recommendations from the... Not on this one, or on the...
No, no.
Okay, with recommendations on the staff report, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, who has the second?
Dan does. Beat me.
Okay, Dan.
I got it.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Last motion.
Is this the architectural review?
Yes.
A motion to approve the architectural review with conditions that all current and future DRC review comments are complied with, along with any conditions as stated in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All three pass. We'll go ahead and move to our next agenda item. Let me get back to it. Commissioners' minute. Do any of the commissioners have anything to share or questions?
I finally tried the new Wendy's. Went and drove around it.
Open.
How was that parking lot?
Fun, like, just like you said.
It's like tickle.
Crazy.
Are we having a work session this month?
I know, I was trying to think.
Well, one item is Dan, so if he doesn't give me stuff, then no.
You'll let us know.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I mean, I always got a plan.
No pressure to Dan.
Anything else? Okay.
Can I say one thing really quick? Just a reminder, it's the municipal primary deadline tonight, so if you haven't submitted your ballots, please make sure that you do so.
By eight?
Eight o'clock tonight?
By eight o'clock PM. And remember, it's not postmarked by eight anymore. It has to be received by eight o'clock PM tonight.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder. If there is anything else, we'll go to item six, staff update.
Don't really have anything to update. I mean, projects are on their way. You see the one... I'll call it Wells Fargo Building. I don't know half of it, it won't be that, but it's merely on its way. I know the building official kind of yelled at him to say, hurry up. They were going really slow, now they've gone too far and have to slow down. But they're moving along. Wendy's is open already. I like the building. I know the contractor said they were impressed with the building, so. And then just see how the projects are moving along.
Okay.
I read somewhere about some ribbon cutting for the pedestrian bridge?
For the what?
Oh, yeah.
Pedestrian bridge?
I have no idea.
Yeah, there is a ribbon cutting for that coming up. I can't remember the date, I'll have to look, and I guess I can send it to Steve, who can send it to everyone.
That's kind of a step towards progress, I guess. Having something done, so. And they painted it, it looked nice, so.
So. Okay. If there's anything else, have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Someone has a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again for the public and your participation. Appreciate it.